Let's get the show on the road here. Okay, we'll call the Tremont Planning Board Meeting of Tuesday, March 12th, order at 6:02 PM. A roll call, we have Lawson, Wilson, Brett Witham, Beth Gott, Ben Harper, myself, Mark Good, our CEO, the applicants and their representatives, a member of the public, and Mr. Dan Pellegi, who I'm assuming is representing in a butter. So, okay, I don't see any reason to change the agenda. Anybody else? Hearing nothing, let's move on to the minutes. They look fine to me. Anybody seen anything they want to correct? Otherwise, I'll take a motion to approve.
I so moved.
Second.
Can you be a little more specific?
I move that we approve the minutes as presented.
Okay, thank you. And we have a second. Okay, motion is second on the table to approve the minutes of February 27th as presented. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor? Okay. We have to reschedule this public hearing for the Libhart because Ben had an issue and wasn't able to make it, so we weren't able to do it that day.
Are you skipping number five? I don't know if there's anything to discuss there, but I just wanted to know.
Oh, the public hearing, yes. I did skip over that, you're right. We need to reschedule the public hearing because of the notification requirements, right? Is that what it was?
Correct.
Okay, so we're going to do it to the 26th. This is a public hearing on land use amendments.
And does that work with the Select Board schedule getting it on a warrant?
They're putting it on warrant. We'll talk about that under other.
Okay. Great.
It may not be exactly as here, but they did vote to put it on warrant. I mean, yeah, for a time meeting on the ballot.
But is the public hearing, like, do you even have a public hearing before it goes on a warrant? Because it was a relationship between public hearing and the warrant issuance or the warrant.
So Jesse has told me that they have already approved and put it on the warrant contingent. I mean, they'll accept it as it is now, they want to bounce it back to you for a few things, and that's what Mark wants to talk to you about, but the public hearing is fine to go on with that date. The reason we were one day shy, we have to publica- put it into publication twice, we were one day shy for the second one. So we had to reschedule it to the 26th. Because I couldn't, we were past the date, I had to get it to the paper.
That, I think, makes sense to me. What I'm questioning, though, is if we have a public hearing on the 26th, is it too late then to change in response of the public hearing? Can the Select Board change the language after that, or is that like, are you?
They have to hold their own public hearing on it after we do.
After we do.
I believe after, they'll have it after we do. I don't, I don't know exactly what their plans are.
I would have to go check with Jesse on that. But Jesse hasn't told me that this is all, we're all set to go, and that is okay.
Okay.
Okay, I'll take a motion to reschedule the public hearing to 6:00 PM on the 26th of March, my youngest daughter's birthday. Public hearing on the land use amendments.
I so moved.
Do you have a second?
I'll start then.
Motion is second on the table to reschedule the public hearing on land use amendments for 6:00 PM, the 26th of March, right here in the town office meeting room. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Five zip, okay. Now we'll go to six, how's that? Thank you, Lawson, for keeping me on track here. Yeah, Ben was unable to make it, so we need to reschedule it, but I want to mention something. It's kind of odd the way our subdivision ordinance says we only need two people, okay, whereas everything else says three. It should be, it's so much cleaner with three because, well, for a couple reasons, but first of all, it makes it an official meeting, the public can attend, that sort of thing. And also, I was looking if we can do it with two. If you look at the MMA manual, it gets, if there's only two of us and it's not an actual meeting, you've got to be careful about us asking questions and getting information because of ex parte discussion, the possibility of that. So I would like it if three of us could go to that site walk, at least three of us. So you have a, and it has to be noticed, too, if three of us go, as a public meeting.
Correct.
So the question is, when do we want to reschedule it, too?
So I believe it has to be in the paper for seven days prior, as well as posted in the office and in the post offices.
Okay, which means.
And it's too late to get in the paper on the 14th, two days from now?
Yes, that would be too late.
So the first time it would appear is the 21st, and then, so the soonest we get out of the law through would be the 28th. And did that do that math right?
I think so.
Is there a, are there certain guidance about when, like, how soon we have to have it?
So it's supposed to be scheduled within 30 days of the pre-application workshop.
So that better remember from last time. So we're going to miss that, we'll miss that?
Yeah.
Well, it was scheduled, right? Technically, so.
Doesn't say anything about a reschedule.
It wouldn't happen, but it was scheduled. It was a health issue that.
It was a health issue that forced it.
Precluded us from attending. Ben didn't want another repeat.
Does it say scheduled and take place, or does it just say just scheduled?
Just as scheduled.
Okay.
Okay, somebody going to make a motion?
I mean.
The 28th we're looking at, it's obviously lighter, lighter than that.
Tuesday the 2nd?
Pardon?
Should we stay with Tuesday, Thursday the 28th at 5:00?
That's the earliest we can do it, right?
Correct.
That's right.
And does that work with you? Did you say you'll be back? Okay.
And is the applicant here?
No.
No, they have both their representative and the engineer have well spoken with me and told me to let them know and they'll make it work.
All right. I'll make a motion to schedule.
What, how about time? You have an idea?
We did 5:00 on Thursday, the 28th work for folks.
You'd have had the committee meeting that night.
Let's not do it then. And does 5:00 work for you in your cap?
Later is better for me, if sick or later, or early in the afternoon.
How about 6:00 on Tuesday the 2nd of April?
On Tuesday the 2nd?
That's the week after our next planning board meeting, and the week before the one after that, so it's sort of in the off week of a planning board meeting. I don't know, I can't see it by calendar from here.
Do we, okay, we don't have a planning board meeting that day, okay.
No, the night.
Yeah.
So seconds.
I'll make a motion.
I'll, would like.
By 30?
Well, I don't want to make it too late. It does still get, I mean, it's light now, but it's.
Light now, it'll only be lighter in three days.
Yeah, yeah. 5:30 or 5?
Well, except that doesn't work better well for Ben.
Yeah, 5:30 would be better.
5:30, okay, go ahead.
I'll make a motion to schedule a site visit for the Leephart Family Lands subdivision for Tuesday, April 2nd at 5:30 PM.
So where are we going to meet?
At the two or three car garage on.
Captain's quarters.
Captain's quarters. At what time, 5:30, right? Okay, motion is second on the table to reschedule the site walk for Leephart Family Lands subdivision to Tuesday, April 2nd at 5:30. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Okay. Thank you.
Two car garage.
You know where it is, right? Yep, okay. New business, site plan review, Tina Lunt, Tina's Takeout. Derek?
Hello.
Want to briefly explain what's going on here?
Our family is going to add a takeout kitchen to the property to serve takeout lunch and dinner to people that would take food away, or that want, they would like to also provide a bigger tables for them to sit at, but it will not be a restaurant environment, it won't be table service or anything like that, so it'll be primarily just takeout.
Do we have any questions before we start to look at this?
No, I think, I mean.
Some may come up as we go through the checklist here.
This is site plan review.
Yep.
And we determined that that, the land use ordinance does not apply?
Not for completeness.
The land use ordinance will, you know.
Apply for substantive review, but not for purposes of completeness of the application.
That makes sense.
Anybody?
I'm running it up.
Okay. Remember, we don't need a, we don't need a motion from each individual one for completeness here. Okay, first of all, fully executed signed copy of the application for site plan review. Got that in under one. Okay, everybody okay with that? Evidence of payment of the application, front slot and binder, copy of receipt. I already had a que- have a question. You look at our submission and review procedures. It says, "In addition to the application fee, the applicant for site plan review must also pay a technical review fee in the amount of $500 to defray the town of Tremont's legal and technical costs of the application review." That has not been paid, I take it, right? Since there's only $400 in there.
When did the technical review become an implement?
It's something that's held by the town, and if we call in an engineer or somebody else to, for, to look at the project on our behalf, a peer review, if you will, some of that money is, that money is used for that.
And when is that required?
It's, if you read the ordinance, page seven of the Site Plan Review Ordinance, Technical Review Fee, D fees, D2.
I've never been seeing where the site plan review is required.
We've required it before.
I just wanted.
Neighbor down there, Pointy Head, had to pay it.
So you've required it every site plan review?
The site plan ordinance requires it.
But you haven't required it.
If we have it, we should have it, it was something that was overlooked.
Do you want for the last step of?
Site Plan Review Ordinance, page seven, under fees. This is under Article 6B, Application Submission and Review Procedures, which is what we're doing now, D fees on page seven, application fee, the technical review fee.
This is under final approval and filing?
Did you?
It is under fi- yes.
That's, yeah. So that would be if we did need it. Now, the last sentence there is also, "The board may reduce the amount of the technical review fee or eliminate the fee that determines the scale or nature of the project will require a little or no outside review."
I would also would, would not think that there would be any kind of engineering review that would be necessary for this scale of the project.
That's true, with that last sentence, you know, may reduce or eliminate the fee. What do you think, folks?
I guess I want to wrap my head around the scope of the project a little more before making a determination if we want to reduce the technical fee or not.
Okay, we'll skip that one, come back to it.
But I think it's worth earmarking.
But he is correct, that that is under the final approval and.
Yeah, yeah. But so is fees.
What do you mean? It's a separate paragraph, final approval by the chapter, paragraph C, paragraph D. Reading that wrong, isn't this?
It is under D fees.
D fees, so I don't see where it says when.
Yeah, it doesn't specify.
In the process that, you know, would be required to, I guess, some payment of remaining money is that's. Yeah. I guess the application is considered incomplete until that is the payment of the fee submitted by the board. Does that make sense? So I think that's the useful sentence. The application is incomplete until we see the fee or determine, decide, can we make a determination that we reduce or eliminate the fee?
So we're okay with that, you think, the way it is now?
The way it is now, it's still incomplete, it can sit there, you know.
You're right, if we do need a technical review fee, yeah, we can bring that in. Everybody agree with that? Okay, yes. Sorry for the confusion.
That's okay.
It's my fault. One original and nine copies of written materials plus one original and nine sets of maps. Maps or drawings must be a scale sufficient to allow review of items listed under approval standards, but in no case greater than one inch each goes 100 feet. Do we have those?
The large one? Or you should have all the site plans within your.
We have, yeah, but do we have the original, the large one?
Do you have that with you?
I did, I did not think we needed the 24 by 36 today for, for this view. Because we wouldn't be actually looking at it and making changes to it, which may need to happen.
Does the applicant get this checklist?
Yeah.
So what I'm reading is it's large enough illegible for review, which this should be.
I think the reason he is relying on that is when he did the Bass Harbor Marine, you guys asked him for several changes from the large one, so I think he probably was waiting to confirm that he's going to keep the same site plan or make additional changes per what you suggest.
But you did have a copy of this site plan review checklist, right?
I do.
Okay.
Which I also don't see on the checklist where it states 24 by 36, it just asks for large amount for review.
Yeah. What do you think, folks?
I'm fine.
It seems complete. I feel like we can review this.
Okay.
That's his.
Yes, okay. Record owner's name, address, phone number, applicant's name, address, and phone number. We've got that on the application. Location of all required building setbacks, yards, and buffers, site plan. What do you folks think?
I see the building distances, I don't see the setback line yet.
From the buildings?
No, from the property line, maybe I'm.
On.
I guess we don't necessarily need it, but I can see where the buildings are. But there's a new building going, right? And there is, 25 feet.
Does that say 25 feet?
It does, I guess the, the plan does not show us what the setbacks are in the ordinance, in the zone.
There's a, well, that's easy enough. It's 15 to the road, 25 to the line, it's.
Is it 25 to 7?
Memory serves.
Yes, because it's a commercial building opposed to a residential.
Yeah.
So I think I would earmark that and ask Derek to add, because to me, this does not show the location of all required building setbacks. We know it, and we've got an ordinance here that says it, but the site plan does not show the.
When has that been required, may I ask?
I'm just reading 7.24 B and then.
Well, I'm trying to figure what you're trying to say, and you'd like to see on the plan, like a.
It would be like a dotted line 15 feet away from the property line.
It's there, it's just under the 15.
I see the, I see, I see the setbacks on here, that's.
Yeah.
Looking at the same dot line.
Yeah. So if you're looking at the proposed building underneath the arrow, I see that he's put the 15 over it, but there are two lines just like the one showing 25 foot setback there.
But there's nothing there telling me that that is the setback per the zoning, like.
So you literally want it to say setback, is that what I'm getting?
Well, yeah, and I think I want to see the, like, the 15 foot setback line, the location of all required building setbacks.
You want an actual order line.
I think an offset, like, like, take the property by an offset of 15 feet, and that then, and label that, I think, setback.
Just that building locations are on the entire property.
The whole, the whole property.
Is there multiple setbacks, there's 6, 15, 25?
Exactly, because if that's what I'm wanting to make sure is the plan, that, it's sort of, the applicant has the burden of proof, and they have got to demonstrate to us that.
I just want to make sure I understand what you want.
Yep, so whatever zone this is in.
Residential business, yeah.
Setbacks for side lots and front setbacks, and that should be illustrated on the site plan.
I guess I'm still confused by what you're saying, but that's all right.
Well, no, it's not, you should definitely understand, so.
So I see the setbacks on the paper.
No, you don't. You see like a distance of the building, but a setback would be like a line parallel to the property line, that would be like drawn and dotted line, and so you'd see this like inside footprint that would show the planning board what the buildable.
That's what I, that's what I, I see.
Okay, so it's not being used on the plan so far of anything that.
Yeah, and like here, 50, yeah, here's like 50 some, yeah.
25 here, and then the 6 here.
Yeah, he's got that, 24.
Yeah, but that's the actual setback. What he wants to know is what's the required setback.
So what's the ordinance setback, and so if it's 6 feet on the sideline.
This just shows what the, what the actual setback is.
Okay.
Like, what he wants to see is, instead of us, instead of taking the, you know, and knowing what the setbacks are and saying, okay, well, 25 feet, so it's more than 15, you want to see, you're asking for the dotted line that shows the setback applicable to that property line.
So I'm to assume we want three dotted lines then, because there's going to be one for.
For every property. I mean, unless there's a zero setback. Maybe, maybe there's some property line that has zero setback, which would be fine, but anywhere.
The roadway would have 15, a 6 and 15, the property line for the building would have a 6, a 15, 25.
Exactly, yep.
It's, I feel that in certain locations, those three lines are going to add a lot of business to this plan, like with the parking being 6 feet away. If you want me to carry those lines over to the parking spaces?
I think that's what, yeah, and maybe just make them a dotted line or a dash line or something, and yes, it is, can be sometimes confusing and it's a little hard. I don't know, maybe, I mean, certainly in the planning board, I mean.
If you're going to put a building up and it's got to be 15 away from the property line, that property line, but extended that line where there's nothing going to be built, why do you need to delineate 15 feet up there if nothing's going to be there, just where the, the structure is going to be? So I think you're kind of muddying the waters up here with putting all these lines in when there's multiple, you know, if there's a structure fine, it has to be 15 feet, 25 feet.
What do you gain by that, is my question?
The achievement of ordinance, which adds to the location of all required structures, setbacks, yards, and buffers. And so I'm wanting to see the location of all required structure setbacks. I mean, if I'm overruled, that's fine, I'm comfortable being overruled, but that's what I'm asking for on page nine of the planning board.
What if in the notes it was written per item?
Mm-hmm.
So you could reference quickly.
That would help, I think that would certainly satisfy me, like, basically what it does is it, it, I'm asking the applicant to like, make it very clear and easy for us that like, this is the requirement, we've done the requirement, and at the post, asking us to then sort of go through the ordinance and say, oh, like, it's, you know, about 6 feet, you might make a mistake, we might catch up a mistake, that's fine, but we're asking you to demonstrate this is the requirement, we've done the requirement. Mostly we've done that, it's just this setback thing, which I haven't had in my head, you know, so I want to see that in the application. I would say that that's incomplete at this point, that's my observation, and, you know, we're not voting on each one of these, but we could like have a conversation about it.
Afterwards, yeah.
If other people say, Derek, Lawson, you're being an idiot.
I think you're supposed to, if there's any discussion, I think you're supposed to motion on that question and take a vote.
I don't think that we have to do that.
We'll make a motion at the end with, and we'll list our requirements.
Okay, that's just.
And we'll approve those or not.
I suppose we do different lanes of the system?
As long as I have a clear list of things.
For sure, you're correct. That motion should have a very clear, like, these are the four things that we want, and we should all, there should be a majority of the planning board that approved that, okay?
Okay, names and addresses of all property owners within 500 feet of any and all property boundaries. Now, I should have mentioned this before, I did notice that somebody is in that list that's on this board. Ben?
Ben?
But you're not a direct a butter?
No.
No? What, which property is yours in the tax map?
I'm on Western Way, third lot here.
So you don't really feel you have any conflict of interest, you're not a direct a butter or anything here? People satisfied with that?
I don't know, I don't know yet. Where, where is Ben?
Okay, there's a tax map here somewhere, where is it?
Western Way.
Five. Tax map's five, okay.
Five, tab five?
Uh, tab five.
You're.
Yeah, that one.
Map 13.
Yeah, it's five. And you're on Western Way, which lot number, Ben?
I am the third one in on the water side, on the.
So that's 11.
Right, left inside.
11, I guess.
I don't think that's a conflict of interest there.
That's a long ways away.
Yeah, that's, I agree.
Yeah, so why was he notified?
It says.
Because you have to notify everybody within 500 feet, okay.
So.
I don't, yeah.
We ran into a similar issue with Bass Harbor Woods and the Gotts owning a lot when we discussed Pointy Head, and remember, it was way in the back, it wasn't, it wasn't abutting the lot, and we said it was fine for her to participate.
Right, and there's no financial interest.
No, no.
In the project.
No.
Except for Ben walking over to get things to eat occasionally, right? Might that work out in the applicant's favor? Okay, so we're okay there?
If he feels comfortable, I don't.
Yeah, I mean, you don't feel you have a conflict there or not? Okay, I'm okay with that in this case, okay. So we do have that. Sketch map showing general location of the site within the town based on the tax map, we just looked at the tax map, so we're okay there. Boundaries of all contiguous property under total or partial control of the owner or applicant regardless of whether all or part is being developed. regardless of whether all or part is being developed. We've got that in the site plan, it's just that one lot, right?
True.
Yeah.
Across the street is not owned by the once...
Okay. Tax map and lot number of the parcel or parcels in which project is located, we've got that, we know. Copy of the deed to the property and option to purchase the property or other documents to demonstrate right title or interest, we have a deed. Attachment four, we okay with that, folks?
Yep.
Name, registration number, and seal of the person who prepared the plan applicable. Derek, are you an engineer?
I'm licensed.
You're not a licensed engineer, okay. So you wouldn't have a, a seal anyway.
Is there, we've got an agent authorization on the top?
Yeah, yeah, so we're okay. They're okay. Evidence of the applicant's technical and financial capability to carry out the project as proposed.
This is water from the bank.
Yep, got that. Zoning classifications. It's on the planning board application, I think it says that. Yep, business residential, actually it's residential business, yeah. Our favorite zone. Yes. Bearings and length of all property lines developed and the source of this information. Site plan. Notes.
Yep, that's there.
We okay then?
Yep.
Okay. Location and size of any existing septic and well, culverts, drains, underground tanks. Let's see, we're okay.
And where's the attached design?
Septic line is on the last.
It's on the very last one, I believe, ten.
And so those are all existing, or is that new?
Existing, approved, not installed yet.
Existing and approved, but not installed. Is that true for all the tanks?
I think three tanks?
Yes.
And I haven't looked closely at the design, but that's for the three tanks?
Correct.
Is there a well shown on here?
There's the house, there's, and then across the drive.
Oh, I see W.
There's two, two wells.
The one that looks like it's in the house is actually under a deck, it's not in the house.
Oh, I was wondering about that. Because people have it in their basement.
I knew my house was old.
Where's the other one?
It's right close to the...
The parking all the way on the bottom there?
Oh, okay, over there, okay, thank you. We okay there then, folks?
Yep.
Yes? Locations, names, and present width of existing streets and rights of way within or adjacent to the proposed development? Now, is there a stable lane down there somewhere?
Yes, right, and right after that, right after this development, same side where Spencer Urban used to live.
Oh, okay.
Did those show up on the tax map? Is it, is like a private drive?
It's named, so it's for nine-one-one purposes, it's a road.
But you are correct, it is not on our tax map.
It's not on the tax map, and I, I got to thinking about it, I looked at Google Maps today, and I saw stable lane.
It's on map?
Because I was wondering how they access some of those houses there.
It's on map oh-three, which is the next map after map thirteen in tab five, shows stable lane.
Oh, let's see.
Is that within two hundred feet of the site?
Well, we get to that later on, I was going to ask that, that's where I was actually going to ask the question.
Oh, I see, right, it's, it's not within, or maybe adjacent to the proposed development?
Okay, where is it? Here. Bass Harbor Woods, there's stable lane. That's interesting.
It's not within two hundred feet of the proposed building, but it is...
It's actually two hundred feet of sight.
Yeah, so that should be included.
Yeah. So that's a no.
What number is the board on?
Seven, three, D. Location, names, and present width of existing streets and rights of way within or adjacent to the proposed development. So stable lane is missing, it should be on the plan, right, folks?
Yes.
Okay, that's a no. Location, dimensions, and elevations of all existing buildings on the site. I see elevations.
What does NGVD stand for?
National Geodetic Vertical Datum System.
Cool.
It's a new one of me.
That sounds fancy.
Get that, Paul.
You just made that up.
I didn't, I promise.
It works for me.
So that's a yes. Unless somebody sees something they don't like. You're pausing Lawson, so...
Oh, no, no, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm okay.
Sorry, yeah, but... Location, dimensions, existing driveways, parking, and loading areas, walkways, and sidewalks on or immediately adjacent to the site. So what's there for driveway now?
All, all driveways are there, but there's already an approved MDOT expansion that, which created the twenty-four foot driveway.
So the existing driveway is smaller than twenty-four?
The one to the south is twelve foot, and the one that is twenty-four is currently twenty-four. It's been expanded to twenty-four feet.
And so that, that was sort of a dumbass, like, road width.
The twenty-four foot driveway is already in there.
Yeah, that was permitted by the MDOT last June, I believe.
And then what about the parking?
What was it permitted for, is there, just for a road opening? Was just a road opening permit?
It's permitted for the residential business, home occupation.
Home occupation? This is in home occupation?
Correct, it's home business on the MDOT, it's not home occupation.
The permit states driveway to home business at...
I didn't see, that's not in our packet, or, I mean, in your...
Well, I don't, it was an existing, existing, we're not proposing to do it, so it's already, there's no requirement to provide new old information.
Okay.
Is the parking areas existing or proposed?
The space isn't existing, there's no delineation for spaces right now.
But that's right now gravel, gravel.
It's all gravel right now?
Yes. There's no plan for pavement.
Okay, we okay with the location, dimensions of existing driveways, and et cetera, et cetera?
Yeah.
Yes, I was just asking, just to clarify or clarify one more time, that the, like, the perimeter line of gravel driveway existing, I guess that's, that's the label that refers to what that is. That's, currently that's a gravel pad, and that's existing and that's not changing.
Correct.
Yes, on that side, that's what the drawing says, that's what goes good.
Okay. Location of the intersecting roads or driveways within two hundred feet of the site, we already talked about stable lane not being on there, so that's a no.
We talked about that in the contents of paragraph seven point three point D, because it's adjacent. Is there anything, is Western further than two hundred feet away?
Um...
Yeah.
It's which one?
Western, I think is the next one. Or Blackacre Lane, which is across the street? I think that should show up.
Blackacre is on the tax map, I'm sure.
I was already going to add that since stable lane is in it.
Yeah, I think, I'll add Blackacre. Let's add, add Blackacre. And Deerfield, no, that's Harbor Ridge. What's Deerfield Place?
There is Deerfield too.
On the side of the cemetery, the opposite side, just where...
Which might be further than two hundred feet?
I have Harbor Ridge shown on the plan, that area of it that's within two hundred feet.
And is Harbor Ridge the same thing as Deerfield Place?
It's on Deer, it'll be.
All right. Great, okay, I think it's just Blackacre that's in addition to Stable.
Blackacre?
Yep.
And Stable?
Yes.
Let's see that, okay, we be on, okay. Location of open drainage courses, wetlands, stone walls, graveyards, fences, stand of trees, and other important features? Oh, we got the graveyard there. Well, I have to admit, when I saw the picnic tables, at first I thought that was a graveyard. Little crosses there.
Cross leg. I see, I don't know, a handful of trees indicated, one, two, three, six existing trees, maybe? Is that pretty accurate? There aren't a lot of trees on the site?
Correct.
And no wetlands?
No, sorry.
And is this fence existing or proposed?
Proposed.
Okay.
It's a requirement.
The, the privacy, the privacy fence?
Yeah, we felt it was a requirement.
Yeah, I, I didn't know whether it was up now or not, I didn't, okay. We okay with that one, seven, three, H? Location of open drainage courses, et cetera?
Um, yeah, I guess it's a little confusing because we've got, I think, an existing fence line, the following fence line, one hundred and ten feet.
That's the cemetery.
The cemetery fence.
Yes, which is built right on the property line.
And then there's a tree that is a proposed tree for parking requirements.
Correct.
And an existing driveway, but then the privacy fence?
Correct.
I don't think it's clear in the drawing, I heard you say clearly that it's proposed. Is there anywhere else in the application where you say that we're proposing a fence? And if not, maybe you'd add a little like eight foot, or proposed eight foot privacy fence?
Yeah, for buffering requirements, I, I didn't see anything, so I don't think he has.
Page under section three.
Page two.
Narrative.
Which one, on three?
I'm sorry, section three, on the second page, under land use ordinance, performance standards, number A, letter A.
Eight foot wooden fence will be installed, yep. See it's attached site plan for proposed location, I think we're okay.
Yeah, I think that, yeah, we can trace that back and recognize that that's proposed, not existing.
Since he's already going to be making changes, would you like him to just put proposed?
Yep.
Well, yeah.
But...
You mean on the site plan?
On the site plan.
On the plan, so...
Yeah.
I just want to be, where is he still revealing the existing conditions? I think that's all there is.
Okay. Direction of existing surface water drainage across the site, I saw an arrow somewhere which just says water flow and points that way. We okay with that?
Um, it seems vague, or...
It's kind of what I thought.
I mean, if that's true, and it's just like a...
There's also the contour map on the...
There are, there is?
Section eight.
Oh, well then, maybe?
It's a general idea of the contour.
Section seven.
Yeah, okay.
Um, so that's going, those are ten foot contours?
Yes.
Looks that way.
It's a rather flat area here.
Well, I guess it's hard to know, I mean, I guess there's not a lot of information, maybe there doesn't need to be a lot of information. I guess I would say that it is, is it complete? I guess it's complete as long as drainage isn't a big issue. But if, like, stormwater management is challenging on this ish, on this site, it's hard to... It doesn't seem like there are any provisions for stormwater management, which might be fine if it really is a pretty flat site.
At some point, we're going to have to make a site visit.
That's probably...
So we could make observations, it seems to be running in a different loop, different direction, I guess.
And if we don't have enough information at that point, or if we feel like, or if we do a third-party review and the engineer says, oh, it turns out...
I mean, this does show the direction of the service water, so we're okay there.
Thank you.
Whether we actually like the way it is or not right now.
I think we can say it's complete.
Yeah.
There are no elements, all right.
Location, front view, dimensions, and lighting of existing signs. Okay, there are no existing signs, so not applicable. Location, dimensions of any easements and copies of existing covenants or deed restrictions. We've got the deed. Were there any restrictions? I didn't notice any, I looked at it earlier.
The copy of the deeds I have is cut off. I don't know if that is, do you see that two in your copy?
That it's just the one paragraph, not the entire deed?
No, I'm looking at...
What's that under, which section?
On the deed, like, after the state of Maine Hancock, that's asking a little bit. Because it's like, I got one line that says personally appears to be above name Charlie Dillon, select person's proceeding, select person's comment, and something else below that, but...
Yeah, mine's cut off too. Essentially, this is a release deed for tax purposes, unpaid taxes. That must have been paid up at some time back in May of two thousand and nine.
I'm comfortable assuming that that's not, there's nothing below that that's remain, but...
That would be, the, the other deed is, look at exhibit A.
Yeah.
No restrictions or anything, so we're okay there. Indication of water supply sufficient in quantity and quality for both normal use and fire protection. Indication of water supply sufficient in quantity and quality for both normal use and fire protection. Page two. There is a, if you can remember, there is a fire pond nearby here, just a short distance away. I think we're okay there. Water supply is sufficient in quantity, do we have a? Where's the water gonna come from for the restaurant? Down in the, that lower one by the parking or?
From the house.
From the house, okay. And do we know if that's of a sufficient quantity?
Twelve gallons a minute.
Twelve gallons a minute?
It's for, I mean, it's a takeout, so there isn't a lot of water used in this on the restaurant.
There's no dishwashing or thing, anything, well, there must be some cleaning up.
Dishwasher.
Yeah.
You know, I just have a couple of questions on the, I'm just reading the subject thing, I'm trying to figure it out. It talks about, I guess plans probably change, but it talks about a two bedroom garage apartment, is that happening or no?
That's a future plan that is not being proposed.
Okay.
Right, separate garage that we thought we might fix up and maybe perhaps a new building employee or something. So when we were having our subject design, we decided that we have it adequate. But there is no plans to go about that yet.
Okay. And I just want to make sure there's any of the conflict on the, on the app, on the, sir, the wastewater application. Is this typo like Nate Young, is it, was that like a typo?
Yeah, I'm not sure why that got on there.
And then it actually was Tim got, Tim got, is that because Tim and Doug, Dougie got?
I talked to Tim and he's.
He's the one that made arrangements, he can get Bill LeValle. Whereas if you called and wanted subject system, you might wait six months.
Wait here, so. But Tim is not an owner.
No, nothing good, no.
Satisfied with that, I kind of.
Yeah, I just want to. Raise it, then I'm fine, yeah, okay, thanks.
Okay, how about the indication of water supply sufficient in quantity and quality? Good? Estimated demand for water supply and sewage disposal together with the location, dimensions of all water supply and wastewater disposal. Evidence of their adequacy for proposed use, including soil test pit data if onsite sewage disposal is proposed. The calculations here.
I think that's where I was just kind of looking at, I think. Yeah.
No snow cones.
Yeah, I saw that. Does that make a difference, snow cones?
The cow can blow it out of the water.
I tell the water apparently now to serve ice cream, you're gonna have the running water for your.
Oh, sure.
Oh.
It adds a lot more water to your system.
So it does blow up.
Yeah.
And if you're doing so good, if you're making ice and serving ice, then that's like a public water supply.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right.
There you go, alright, no snow cones, alright.
Bill's helping me if I don't add on the.
Hope you're not too disappointed.
System will be adequate if you do ice cream if you want, whatever that means.
So that means you forgot the department?
Right, if I don't add the department, we could eventually maybe add ice cream if you want or whatever. Not sure that's a separate.
Are you gonna be doing the cooking?
What's that?
Are you gonna be doing the cooking?
Only when I have to.
Okay. So we okay with the estimated demand for water supply and sewage disposal, I think?
Yes.
Okay, good. Direction of proposed surface water drainage across the site and from the site with assessments on impact on downstream properties.
What's the surface on the picnic tables?
I'm sorry, what, what's that?
The surface on the picnic tables right now is outside the gravel, that grass right now?
Oh, it is gravel?
Is it existing gravel? Is there a difference between the gravel parking and the gravel picnic area? No. I think the drawing should show that.
That that's gravel?
Well, that there's no, that like, what's the existing gravel area and what's the proposed gravel area? And I think they're the same.
They're the same.
But right now, it seems like the existing and proposed is just the parking turnaround area.
When was all this work done?
The line is, the line is, the line is there to show delineation between so that you can understand flow of traffic coming and going.
And I think that's very helpful and probably should be, there should be some space. So people driving there can also, like, once they're putting tables there. And I guess there are lights going in, yeah, there are lights going in, I don't know. But this like proposed surface water drainage. What are proposed, change? Not proposed, it changed, that makes sense.
This had to be permitted, right?
Like the way that ground is being used, but the fact that it's existing gravel.
There's a lot of lobster traps there right now.
Ooh. That was not. That's all.
Where are the lobster traps?
They may move from them. Yeah, they may move.
Yeah, but, yeah, I go by and.
They may move from the picnic table area, they were.
Right, they were out.
They'll be moving soon too.
In the water.
Time to go back to where I'm at, where's your line?
It's a board's pleasure on that one.
I think it's, I would like more information about what the like brown surface is. Where there, where's our grass, where's our gravel? And where are there changes to that ratio? I don't think there, I don't think there are any changes, well, actually there's a new building going in. So that, that would be a change. And maybe is surf, is stormwater different?
Well, stormwater is seven, on the last page, and I had questions about that when we get there.
This is surface water drainage versus stormwater calculation. Yeah, I think, I guess those are related or overlapping. But I don't think that there's enough information. Lawn area, it shows lawn area, that's helpful, okay, but the way this is drawn, the fact it says lawn area there, which is contiguous with the park, the picnic area. Makes me think that the picnic tables are on top of lawn, but I think they're not, either on gravel.
But they're on gravel, yeah.
So there's, I think there's some differentiation there. So it's accurate and matches, we'll see, we'll leave it a site visit. And then the site drainage direction unchanged, that's a very useful note, that should stay. And maybe some note about surface treatments to remain.
As is.
Are we satisfied with this then, or? I'm not sure exactly what you're asking.
I'm asking for a, to delineate between the gravel areas and the lawn areas. And to make a note that the, those surfaces are not, are to remain. The gravel area will stay gravel and the lawn area will stay lawn.
I agree, that'd be good to know, but does it have anything to do with this, what condition that we're talking about right now?
Proposed surface water drainage?
Yeah.
I guess I'm trying to figure, well, okay, maybe it's more about permeability than it is direction. So it could be under the stormwater section as opposed to the direction of proposed surface water. I guess I'm just trying to figure out where is the stormwater going to go, but maybe that.
The stormwater?
Yeah.
The last, on the last page.
I think let's, I'll, I'll make that note.
So Brad, were you gonna say something, I, you started to?
Only that I think if they're gonna hot top, I think what you're trying to get at is, as part of this project, what surface area is no longer gonna be permeable? Like, is there gonna be hot top, or you put a bunch of buildings on there and it rain, all of a sudden, water collects, you know, just can't go into the ground. You know, we need to see that, and I think, you know, it does say existing gravel driveway, that's fine.
Yep.
I don't think there's a plan to hot top any of this.
That's right.
And so we just want that set in stone?
Yep.
We're not gonna hot top it, it's kind of made part of it, I think, just, when I think that word, sub, whatever the word is where stuff can go through it.
Permeable.
Well, yeah, it's not.
Permeous?
Yeah, 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 we just want to know, you know, what, how are you gonna change the footprint of the, you know, the availability of water to, you know, get into the ground versus collect on roofs and.
Yeah.
Stuff like that, which I think is not, if it's all gravel and you've just got that one building, it's probably not a big deal, I just want to make sure it's set in stone.
There's no plan to hot top it as of yet, I guess. Because when you do hot top it, you are, that cuts into your permeable area.
That's right, right.
You're allowed to know law.
Yep.
So we're okay with?
Yeah.
Okay, yes.
Probably add a note somewhere eventually that says, you know, gravel parking lot, gravel under the, you know, under the tables or something. Just so it's clear that that's what we saw, that's what was approved in the, at the time or something.
Provisions? Provisions for handling solid waste, including hazardous and special waste, and location of proposed screening of any onsite collection or storage facilities. We do see the dumpsters on here. I'm assuming that you're not gonna take the garbage to the dump.
No, I figured we'd have a dumpster, I mean, having a house cumulated, sorry, have a dumpster and have some halls away. And we figured the fence would be after screening, property line fence, yeah, screening from the neighbors.
For the dumpsters? Which you don't show in here, right?
Yeah.
The dumpsters, but I mean, the screening, what?
Where's the property line fence, they put privacy fence.
Right, oh, it can, oh.
And it looks like that stops.
I thought it stopped there.
It stops because if you, on the site visit, you can see that the trees in that area and then there isn't really much behind the trees directly, it's more to the left of the trees where their house is located. So we feel it ties into that area and then comes into a natural screening that's already provided.
We can take a look at that.
Yeah, we'll take a look. You might want to screen the dumpsters themselves, period, too.
There is provision for handling solid waste at the bottom line.
Got you. The location, dimensions, and materials to be used in the construction of proposed driveways, parking, there we go, there's a gravel. Parking and loading areas and walkways, any changes in traffic flow onto or off site. Goes back to your gravel thing too, right?
I think I'll just, I'll circle the walkways part and call the picnic area as a walkway or fall into that category, which is not yet. That was like, or, right now, I think it's illustrated as being lawn area, but it's actually gravel. So I think that's the right place for that.
So we're gonna say no on this?
Correct.
Yep.
So are you explaining?
Sure. I think that there just needs to be some line separating the lawn that is east, I think it's east and north up, yeah, east of the parking area, that's lawn area. And right now, I can sort of draw, it looks to me like the picnic area is part of that same shape. But there's some place where lawn turns into gravel.
So you just want clear delineation of where the lawn areas are and notes on areas that are gravel?
Exactly.
Okay.
Yep, and I guess, mostly I'm caring about the picnic area because that's the new thing, adding picnic tables.
And so we're clear, we're showing a maximum, so they may not start out with four or five picnic tables. We're just showing what could fit on the site if they, if they wanted to.
Yeah. And is that whole area from the building to that parking area, that's all gravel or not?
Yes.
Great, yeah.
Proposed landscaping and buffering? We've got the fence.
But I think that if there's existing trees that are providing buffering.
They should be shown on the plan.
Yeah.
But those are, those, there are none on the site. Those are the neighbors.
But the neighbors, I think that, uh, since it's likely for buffering to come up at some point maybe. I think for us to understand that there's like, there is adequate buffering, the fence stops for a reason. If you just sort of shade or like say that, have some arrows saying like existing dense forest or sparse forest or low shrub or whatever the character of that existing thing is. Cause right now, it looks to me like you provide buffering, but only for property line, I don't know why you stop.
Okay, what we're considering here is whether it shows proposed landscaping and buffering, not whether it's adequate, we deal with that later.
Great.
Okay, so it does show that, so we're okay. Location, dimensions, and ground floor elevations, all proposed buildings or building expansion proposed on the site. We got the dimensions. And we got the ground floor elevation, we're okay there. The takeout building, that's a long, narrow building. Is it prefab?
Sure, it's a frame, trailer frame.
Trailer frame.
I thought you were making it to haul traps on. I said, like, God, how is he ever gonna make trends even?
Maybe we put an office in the back end and whatever.
Location, front view, materials, and dimensions of proposed signs together with the method of securing sign, no signs proposed. Are you sure you don't want any signs?
Unproposed.
How, what's gonna keep people from going in either driveway?
If you had one on the building, would that be considered, as part of the building, would that be considered a sign? If it's not separate?
We're not proposing a sign right now.
Okay, no proposed sign, okay.
I'm gonna draw them in the smell.
I don't think we have an odor ordinance, so you're good, do whatever you want. As in fishing town, that would be deer.
That's not fun.
Location and type of exterior lighting.
That's.
Site plan, we see shielded solar lights. Here and there throughout the parking area, the picnic table area. Okay, we okay there?
Yeah.
Location of all utilities, including fire protection. See any utilities on here, anybody?
There's one power pole, just northwest of the proposed building. That the only power pole onsite? Onsite? How does the house, the existing house get power?
Across the street.
Overhead across the street? And there's no fire. Yep, I think that's there.
Okay. General description of the proposed use or activity. It's on the application. It's on the application, very general. Estimate of the peak hour and daily traffic to be generated by the project, estimated forty trips per day. How did you get that estimate?
It was based on how many people are cooking, how many people they feel like they consider. That's they make a animal people than that.
Now, isn't there an engineering manual that shows a, you know, basically like ballparks of trips per day for various establishments?
Yeah, that's.
We we often have applicants come before us and use that information.
I think for for the purpose of completeness, we'll say fine, but that's not gonna cut it. I can tell you right now.
Yeah.
You're gonna get creeped on that one. And you need to put together, there are calculated, we've had it, we've done them on campgrounds, there are, there's manuals. You have to put together some kind of reasonable scientific based, you know, estimate of how many people are gonna show up because we need it to understand what the traffic is gonna be like. And so like, how many, how much things people can cook, eh, it's there, it's fine, you've got, it's complete, but that's not gonna, I can just, just.
I would say if you're open from ten to ten, like you're proposing, forty trips a day seems like low.
It's pretty low.
A summer day, a summer's day, if your if your food's any good, then.
Forty trips per hour.
What's that?
Forty trips per hour.
For each hour.
That's twenty.
This says forty per day here.
Forty per day.
Estimate of the peak hour daily.
And where is that?
I have.
In the application.
Oh, I'm looking at the sheet, so maybe they got that forty an hour.
That's that's trip, so that's twenty cars in an hour.
Okay.
Trip is one car and one car.
Is that in the application?
Where did you, it's it's.
Is it in the application?
I don't see it.
I saw that you, like, estimated forty trips per day, which you established as a typo. But I'm not sure if or where. And maybe that one.
Maybe I just.
I say.
I was reading it off the sheet.
I was too. What, what, is it in the application somewhere? I didn't see it.
I don't know.
I thought I had it in here.
All right, so maybe it's not completely. There is.
Certainly no estimate of peak hour and daily traffic.
Yeah, you'll have to do that. I don't think it's in there. That's a no, I think. Thank Brad, we're, yeah, but you can figure it out, it's like, there is like a thing, you can go online, I think you can plug it in.
Yeah. Take it up, so, yeah. A wildly successful pickup or minimally successful, depending on where you're.
Okay, that's a no. Stormwater calculations, erosion, and sedimentation control measures on water quality and or phosphorus export management provisions if the project requires a stormwater permit from the DEP or if the planning board determines that such information is necessary based upon the scale of the project or the existing conditions in the vicinity of the project. So you you don't have any stormwater report of any kind, you're, you have no plans for that. You just say no proposed grading or filling, right?
Right, so we're not changing anything.
Yeah, but you brought in a lot of gravel, right?
That was already, that was already permitted at that.
I, yeah, and I get what, like, it is what it is, but you gotta get, you've got, I think when, if there's public comment or if people have questions about that, you know, I don't know who did the permit, maybe you don't need to come here, but it just looked kind of funny to bring in a bunch of gravel, change it all, and then and then say, well, that's not part of the project, you know?
Yeah.
It's gotten pretty close to when the project was done, so maybe it's, I don't know, we'll see how it plays out, but you're gonna have to really think about how you, how you.
You did bring in this gravel without planning to do this project.
What do we plan on using the land to store my traps? Do we have all of it in there?
All right, that's a start. I like that.
Boats, like a trailer, like a trap in there, like, I was, you know, like, I need a place to put these things, we have to have the land.
How many traps do you have?
I have a thousand of them, probably. Funny to cover that up. Yeah, and my brother's got his eight hundred in there because C H Rich has been condemned, so everything had to get off the dock. There's, there's quite a few of them there.
It's getting better, I like that.
Well, just so I can be clear, if we were proposing and we were wanting to put all this gravel here, what would you be asking of us?
Probably pre and post development stormwater calculations.
Yeah, you look at.
What's happening right now with the stormwater? And then half the project, what's gonna happen to the stormwater and where is it gonna go?
Because they'd look at what the land is there now and what's that ability for that to absorb, you know, water and how it's situated. And then when you bring in stuff and flatten it out, how does that change how things drain? Is what that would normally look like.
And water does run off pack gravel.
It is what it is, we will.
I say this is a no.
Well, 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 it's not there, I, I.
Yeah.
You have to conclude that, oh, God. I think, I don't know, I think for now, it is what it is. And when we get to substantive review, when people raise issues, we'll have to think about, like, I don't, I didn't keep tabs on dates and, you know, what, what was done when and, and, you know, whether, you know, those traps kept there, whatever. But I think, I do think when there's comment, people are gonna, you know, raise that some work was done, it looks, you know, one could argue, given the sort of sequence and timing, that maybe it was done for this, maybe not, I don't know. I think for now, I don't know. And so I don't know if it needs a, you know, stormwater calculations. They're saying there's no proposed grading or filling. I suspect as it sits there right now, there probably isn't any proposed grading or filling because it's all done. So, so I I actually would say it's probably complete, but it might come up later. So I had to look at it.
I'm looking at the ordinance on page seventeen.
So if it comes up later, are you expecting them to, at that time, provide the stormwater calculation?
We'll have to make a, I don't even know how I would do this. I don't, I don't know. You, 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 you know, there'll be a factual, you know, inquiry as to whether the work that was already done is for this or if it's reasonably for something else and it didn't need a permit or it's already permitted. But it's not something we're gonna resolve tonight. And yeah, I suppose if later on that were established and, you know, then we required it, then they could go back and do it.
Well, if you look at the approval standards for site plan review, okay?
For completeness?
For stormwater, stormwater management, no, just approval, what, review, later review.
I was just saying it needs to be regardless of whether.
Adequate provisions must be made for the collection and disposal of all stormwater that runs off proposed streets, parking areas, roofs, and other surfaces through a stormwater drainage system and maintenance plan, which must not have adverse impacts on abutting or downstream properties. And there's a whole list of other things here.
So you're saying even if the land was existing, just if it's to say, it's just the way it is right now, it's always that way, they would still need a plan, you think?
Even though it says proposed?
So, so if it was causing disruption with a runoff, but there is no problem with a runoff.
Show. Right, I mean, I, I, I mean, it could.
Show us, don't tell us.
Well, that's what.
But, you know, the, the, at least on the sheet.
Yeah, yeah.
At least on the sheet here, though, it, there's two provisos that, you know, seven, four, that's L, I guess. Stormwater calculation, seven, four, if, and maybe it's different in the, I'm just reading off the sheet, so it might be different in the, in the actual ordinance, which I'll look at. It's like, but it says you need that if the project will borrow stormwater permit from the DEP, I don't know, I don't know. Or if the planning board determines that such information is necessary based on the, on the scale of project or existing conditions in the vicinity of the project, which suggests that it's, you know, it's, it's either a DEP permit trigger or it's within the purview of the board, at least that's what it says here.
So it says an illness as well as reading.
So.
I think that's an ill place to, if the project.
Okay. If the project, or if the planning board, well.
I think it should be a separate sentence, the way I read it, almost.
What, where would you put the period?
Provisions, I guess, and if the project requires that, then.
Well.
You know. Page eleven.
Okay, wasn't mine. I don't know enough about, you know, certainly the folks in the cemetery aren't gonna be concerned. Bad joke.
You dropped me on the yard, too.
Neighbors we got.
But they're relatives, maybe, at one point, when the grace.
There's actually a gully there. I think there's something between the, I think there's like.
It's quite built up to the cemetery, the burn.
Right, so it's not gonna go that way. Although I don't know, we don't have any kind of flow lines or anything, do we?
There's no color.
I can't tell, bro.
Yeah, I think that we need more information.
I can't tell.
Like, this confirmation is enough for me to know, like, oh, we don't know what's happening with the stormwater.
The site plan, we can answer a little later.
I'm sorry, what?
When we go to visit the site, it will tell us a lot.
Yeah.
With completeness, do we have, is there like a timeframe on that? Do we need to decide right now tonight, or?
Thirty days once you find it complete.
I'm sorry, what?
It's thirty days once you find it complete, there's no time.
Yeah, it's after finding it a complete.
Let's just, let's hold this for a second. What's the last one, like approval block? Is this, is it the last one?
Yeah, he's got that one, yeah.
All right, so we're done then. So what do we have for open items?
We, for open items, we have.
I think the first one is seven, two, three.
Location will require building setbacks, yards, and buffers. Earl Lawson's request.
Yeah, that's either like a note or some other lines or a note or something like that.
That's right, yep.
What's, I'm sorry.
Existing streets, we talked about steel lane and black.
Hold on, yeah. Location, names, and present width of existing streets and rights of way within or adjacent to proposed development. Location of intersecting roads or driveways within two hundred feet of the site. Boy, wrote that down wrong here on this one. Oh, yeah. Signs we're okay with. Location, dimension, and materials to be used in construction, proposed driveways, parking, and loading areas and walkways, any changes in traffic flow onto or offsite. Estimate of peak hour and daily traffic to be generated by the project.
And then this one, then the one we just talked about.
What's that?
And the one we just talked about.
And stormwater one, yes.
This is gonna be very pragmatic about it. The, if we, let's say we said, no, you don't need one. That would probably be something that someone could appeal.
Right.
You know, and so you, I, I mean, if it were, it has some expense to it. I mean, I'm just playing, I'm just putting people out, it's, it's, you know, I know it was talked about the scale of the project, that's not huge, but it's, you know, pretty good size for where we are and what we all do. And I think there's a pretty good amount of, of flat area analysis created in gravel. And I think that someone could, could raise an issue and if, if, you know, if you, you know, we either deal with it now or, you know, and it, and it just takes a little more time now, a little more money, or you don't. And then if you have to deal with it later, it takes more time and more money. And I kind, but I also feel like we, we should, I, I don't know who, I, I almost wanna go to the site, I forget who the neighbors are, I don't know what are the impacts are gonna be. Like, obviously, obviously, the cemetery, some of the butters are here tonight. Okay, so I don't, I, you know, I.
We have the graveyard, one house behind us.
Yeah. So I don't know enough about how the, I don't remember how it was before, I know it was kind of grassy, it was kind of uneven. If it were me, I would probably wanna do it because you're just gonna end up walking into a problem. That's all, I, I'll open it up for, which means we would say it's incomplete, that would.
Yes, I, I, I think we have.
We could ask the butters if they feel there's a way more runoff, draw more free runoff. Is that a concern? I'm interested just to hear, because you're the ones that are on.
We'll be invited by the board, I'll talk to you after, I'd be happy to.
Okay, I, I, I just wanted to know if there is a legitimate concern over there that we're worried about with runoff.
Mr. Plaguey, since you're representing the butters here, what is your thoughts on that?
The people that, the family that I represent is uphill from this project. So I'm not sure that it's a direct issue that impacts us. I know that, so this is where your, your completeness standard and your review compliance standards are inconsistent because you have to make a finding about stormwater.
Now.
In next time, when you do, when you do your compliance stuff, when you do your, your review. To me, it's always an issue, setting aside my client's concerns, which have more to do with lighting and buffering and screening and noise, things like that. Setting aside that, I think that there's a real problem if, if anyone wants to appeal if there isn't a stormwater analysis. Because I think you have to make a finding in order to grant a permit that stormwater is not affected or that delta. That's, that's sort of broad approach.
Yeah, goes back basically.
Yeah, I mean, the issue.
You either address it now or look later.
The way the completeness is written, we have to, right now, make a quasi-substantive determination of whether we think that there should be a plan. And it's like, I don't, I don't know, maybe, probably, I, I don't know. So you, you almost need to go look at it and get a sense of what's going on before you can say, you know, because I, I think, again, I think it's the DEP permit or if it's we determine based on the scale, existing conditions, you know.
I honestly think this is a relatively quick engineering piece for, for this project, given the topography and the size of the project.
I mean, can we, can we do, you already have some things that are, you know, we've got some other things to clean up. You know, what is the technical review, what is it, isn't there opportunity for the applicant and the board to kind of chit chat about things or something?
Yeah.
Because they, you could go and see what's, what do you think it's gonna cost, or, you know, what would it, you know, and and let us know, like, what, because it's easy, if you decide, like, if you just, if you think that, well, you know, it could, somebody could, you know, get this mucked up and, but, you know, we can come in and have someone do it for, I don't know, I have no idea what these are, a couple thousand bucks, I don't know. And it's a pretty quick thing, there's not, there's not much to worry about, not much going on, then that's probably worth, that's worth, because we can, you can just check that off. We can say, yeah, we require that, it's taken care of. You know, but if you, if, if that's a, you know, some other result, then we can, then it's worth, we can decide, you know.
I think also, there's another scenario in which you don't have to pay a licensed engineer, like, it's possible, if it's actually a simple site and like, that you could address the requirements and the ordinance in some like written narrative.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
You know how to draw, like, like, you could do it yourself and say, like, you know what, like, we've addressed these things, this is how we're, like, somebody else will be done, there's no pulver, this is like the history of it, basically like put in a, on a sheet of paper, a stormwater management plan. I don't think it has to necessarily be the like thirty page stormwater management plan that we've seen for some other more complicated projects. Possible. It's possible that you'll look at and say, actually, you know what, like, we should hire an engineer because this is complicated, we do wanna make sure we address it. But right now, I think it would, when we get to. But right now, I think it would, when we get to substantive review, I think I would have a hard time determining whether or not the project needs it, which makes me inclined to think that it's incomplete at this stage.
I agree that we at least need something.
Yes.
At this point.
We'll have a discussion though.
For us to go on and look at as we go further with the project.
We'll, we'll, we will be providing something in addition to that.
Okay. So, basically what I have, including that stormwater no, we have six things that we found, uh, we didn't approve of here in their, on the checklist. So, honestly, I'm, you know, sometimes one or two things, if it's easy enough to correct, we could make a contingent on something, but I'm a little leery here with this many, that maybe they should come back with, uh, an application that addresses the things that we talked about. I don't know what the other board members.
That's my recommendation.
Can we just address the six that are, yeah?
I don't know, I mean, I think.
We don't need it, go through.
List them clearly and then.
Well, that's a good point, yeah.
Just the six, yeah.
You just add it to what he already has done here.
An amendment to the application.
Yeah, yeah.
I think that's, it also means that we don't, like, the clock doesn't start ticking, so to speak, in terms of like the, the, the next steps. It's not complete right now, so if it takes you a week or six, whatever, to do that, that's fine. Once it's complete, then we can start doing the public application, the public hearings.
We can still do the walkthrough on the second.
So, we, we don't do that until after we find it complete. It's different with the site plan review, yeah.
So he has to get these six done first.
He gets these done, we have to find the application to be complete, and, and then.
Then we go to the site.
Correct, it's backwards to submitting.
Um, we had started this conversation talking about the evidence of payment and the, um, do we need a technical review fee? Do we want to waive that or reduce it or require?
I'm sorry, what did you say?
Honestly, the technical review fee, uh, seven point one point B was the requirement and evidence of payment.
Yeah, yeah.
Anyway, so let's, let's.
The application.
Look at it, and I just think that if we're, it'd be nice if we could correct some direction. Night if we're good on.
I thought we were all set on that, like, or reading on that.
Right now, it's incomplete because there's no evidence of the payment of the fee. And we'll.
Yeah, that, that's.
So either we need to reduce the amount or eliminate the fee. Or not, and then, and then in addition to the list of other things, then the application needs to provide that fee.
But, but, hold on, I, but it. It says evidence of payment of the application. I, you know, I was jumping the gun, that's for final approval and filing, not a submission requirement for the technical review fee.
I don't think that's true.
Final approval and filing, separate, I imagine, mistake as well.
Hopefully, uh, evidence of payment. And, oh, you're, you're right, it does say in submission and technical review fees.
So in paragraph two, halfway down, it says that the application will be considered incomplete until evidence of the payment of this fee submitted to the planning board. And so I don't think that we can find it complete until we have that.
Technical review fee, yeah.
Or unless we waived it, but we, we need to make that determination before we can find it complete, and so.
Any thoughts down this end of the table?
As far as the fee?
Technical review fee.
I would waive the fee.
I would table it.
If we, if we, here's the thing is, if we waive the fee and we decide, wait a minute, we need technical review.
Yeah, if, you know, if, if anything, the technical review, like, what if we had to do it in the past? Usually it's like fighting about, you know.
Stormwater.
Stormwater and stuff like that. I don't know that we're going to have that fight right now, and I don't want to charge them for that if we're not going to have.
Well, we don't, it's not really charged, like, they would get the money back.
We, we hope they get the money back and we don't use it.
We are asking them to like load it or whatever, like, put five hundred dollars in the account, which is not, nothing, that's it. Doesn't really say anything about, like, if we decide in the future that we want to do technical review.
No, no, it's just.
Which is what would make most sense.
Right.
Of course, it doesn't say that.
Right.
Imagine that, huh?
But it does say you may request additional monies to cover expenses.
Yeah, which we, we, we have done with a campground.
If seventy-five percent of the initial technical review fee is used, but if we've established that there is no technical review fee. I, I think that we should ask for the five hundred dollars. And hope that we don't have to use it. But if we don't ask for it now, it seems hard to ask for it.
Later.
Later, and puts us in a tough spot if stormwater management ends up becoming some big, or buffering, we need to hire a third-party.
Buffer expert?
Buffer experts to help mediate on coverage.
We've got some issues.
There may be issues that arise in this process. And I feel like we.
We could work experts on the way, it sounds like.
You convinced me. I don't know, you might, we might not have convinced Ben, but.
No, charge him the five hundred, if we don't use it, he gets it back.
He gets it back, yeah.
It means he can't make interest off of that five hundred dollars in the month that it sits in our account, but.
Whatever interest rates is.
One hundred percent. If you're lucky.
I'll believe by your shoulder.
Mark, you said six before, but.
Seven if counting that one, the technical review fee.
Could you give me the correct numbers?
Oh, yeah, yeah, we'll get incredibly specific for you.
Okay, seven one B, that's evidence of payment. Seven two B, location of all required building setbacks, blah, blah, blah.
Is that non-complete or is that just a request?
No, it's not complete.
Not complete. Seven three D, location, names, present width of existing streets and rights of way within or adjacent to proposed development. And in a related one, seven three G, location of intersecting roads or driveways within two hundred feet of the site. Seven four K, estimate of the peak hour and daily traffic to be generated by the project.
What about seven four D?
Yes, I skipped over, thank you. A seven four D, location, dimensions, materials to be used in the construction of proposed driveways, parking and loading areas and walkways, any changes in traffic that I want to or off-site. And seven four I.
That was the last one.
L, I guess it is, yeah. Uh, stormwater calculations.
That's what I have, I'm sure I have the right ones.
Yeah.
There was discussion about seven four E, the proposed land saving buffering, where we did even complete, it does, it is shown.
But later on, we decide whether it's adequate or not.
Correct, exactly, and I just, you heard me, my comment about like the halfway fence, so. So if you want to include some change or additional information about buffering, so that.
But it is complete because it shows it.
It shows it, we can review that, and if we, you know.
Have to add what's answered something maybe.
Exactly, or if there was.
Okay, we all set on that? I'll take a motion to find the site plan review application for the, uh, what's it called? Tina's takeout to be incomplete for the stated reasons.
I'll make a motion that the, uh, site plan review application for Tina's takeout is incomplete for the following seven reasons or seven criteria. Paragraph seven point one B, evidence of payment of the application, the applicant.
You can probably just do the numbers, please.
Oh.
Don't start reading.
Well. I think I should be specific.
Okay, go ahead.
So that the applicant knows what we're referring to. Uh, seven point one B, evidence of payment, um, the application is missing the technical review fee. Seven point two B, the location of all required building setbacks, that's the important part of building setbacks, is not shown on the site plan. Seven point three D, the location, name and present width of existing streets, specifically stable lane. Seven point three G, the location of intersecting roads within two hundred feet of the site, specifically black acre lane. Seven point four D, the materials used in proposed walkways, including the picnic area, or the, the, the picnic area. The estimate of the peak hour and daily traffic generated by the project, um, the application is just missing that traffic. Analysis, prediction, yeah. And then seven point four L, a stormwater management plan. Meets the requirements and ordinance.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion second on the table to find the, uh, application for Tina's takeout incomplete for the stated reasons. I'm not going to go through them all, I think it's pretty clear to everybody. Um, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Hopefully you know what we need. I hope not too big.
I think there was little bit of being facetious.
I think he was too, but. Okay, moving right on, CEO issues, anything going on there, CEO?
The only thing I brought up to you earlier, and I didn't know at the time of making the agenda, I will be out of town from the twenty-first to the twenty-sixth. I will be back that night for the meeting.
Uh, Mark.
Get planes on.
Yes.
If the airline cooperates with you.
Is that the truth? Kind of.
Um, will, uh, will you be doing our planning work packets for the twenty-sixth, will somebody else?
I'll have them, uh, hopefully done ahead of time, I'm going to be, I stayed late, I stayed all night until midnight. I'll just make sure that everything is done previously and they'll be presented to you, I don't know, we'll set them out for you.
But we don't need to reschedule our meeting.
Yep, I made sure to be back for that.
Okay. Have a good trip. No, I'll see you before then probably. Okay, other, um, uh, Tom V, who was working with us on the solar ordinances, no longer is with, uh, Climate to Thrive. She has a new job, I guess, and it's my understanding that now Gus LaCast will be taking over her role. Okay, um, selectmen, as I mentioned before, they did agree to put on the, uh, the land use amendments in site plan, well, they did the site plan review earlier, on the ballot for the town meeting. Selectmen, one selectman had some questions, uh, or concerns, I should say. And one was about how we worded the exemption for the town in the industrial solar standards, uh, or a definition. And after I learned more about the project and, uh, looking at how we had done it, I think we do need to make a change there somewhat, uh, maybe something like, uh, on-town property rather than by the town because of the way the project is going to be done, somebody else is actually doing the project. But we can do that after the public hearing, I think, can't we, Katie?
That's what Jesse said, correct.
Yeah, yeah, after the public hearing, we can change that. And the other thing is the way it's in there now, it, it, it's a dependent clause, I, I didn't like that. Either make it a separate sentence or, or maybe just add it as a footnote to the table of land use ordinances that, that that's allowable for the, uh, projects like that on-town property are okay. But what we also, I think inadvertently did was we excluded it from those, those projects from having to comply with any standards we developed for those projects. The industrial solar projects, except the town, you know, it's the way it's worded, I can't remember the exact wording now, but, so it wouldn't fall under those standards, and I think they should. So we can discuss that at, at that time. The other thing was, um.
Wait, sorry, at what time?
After the public hearing.
Public hearing on the twenty-sixth.
Yeah.
That way you have the, the people's.
Yeah, and, and. I assume that, I assume that the person, the selectman who was concerned about these things will be at the meeting, at the public hearing. The other thing, he, that narrows it down, it was Mackenzie, right? He, uh, he said, what was the other thing? He, uh, didn't like the use of, uh, the term on-site in those definitions. But I didn't get into it in depth with him at the selectmen's meeting, and I'd like to pursue that further at the public hearing at Puzzled. But I didn't understand from what he was, what he was saying he would like to do with that change. Wouldn't make it an industrial solar, uh, project, so.
I lost it at the end of there.
Details are sketchy, okay, okay, so.
We can start with that.
So basically, basically, I asked why, and it was like, oh, they wanted to possibly do a solar project on a piece of land they had, and then let other people buy into it essentially, one way or another.
Right.
So I don't see why that is not, doesn't fall under the industrial solar definition. Good night, thanks, folks.
Good night, thank you. Think it does, which is.
That, that's what I said, it, it should, but they, this person was arguing that it shouldn't have to.
Well, if he's selling it, or if he's making a profit off of it, it is.
That's what, I, I agree, and, and maybe that person will be at the meeting and explain further.
I heard you had quite a, quite a to-do, but I just don't.
Uh, my question is less about the specifics of that, those comments, and more about the process, in the sense that on the twenty-sixth, we have a public hearing.
Public hearing, yes.
Then we can revise the language.
If we feel like that, yeah.
If we want to or not.
And, and the only other thing is, the, uh, there was another second, it was kind of like, well, is five thousand square feet too big for some projects or whatever, you know, in, in somebody's yard or whatever, but that didn't really go anywhere, so.
If we make, do we have to make changes that night on the twenty-sixth?
You don't have to make changes, period.
Right, that's right, if we want to make changes.
We'd have, we, I think we'd have to do it then because before selectmen do their public hearing on it, and we don't know when that's going to be, right?
I can double-check with Jesse, I apologize, I don't remember.
And, and so then.
Don't remember.
No.
We could make a motion or something, you know, making these six changes to what we.
I think we should take a good look, though, especially at that, for the town project thing. I learned a little more about that and.
Your municipality, so basically, or?
Yeah, well, basically, it, it, it's the solar field out here, they want to expand it.
Yeah.
And at one, at some point in time, Mike Mansalilly was on the board, so that kind of tells you general time period. There was a contract signed with Sun Dog Solar to develop this for the town.
Yeah.
Okay, and they, we found. And they, we found that they authorized, selectmen did authorize, the town manager at the time, that was Chris Saunders, to sign the contract, but, nobody could find the contract, at least, it's not where it's supposed to be, so, I don't know.
I'd hear.
Anyway...
Well, does Sun Dog have a copy of it?
Sun Dog must have a copy, I would hope.
Backdoor.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, there must be a way, but, but anyway, it, it's just the wording, you know, is it a town project, or is it not a town project? Well, it is a town project, but who's actually doing the development? The way it's worded now, I think it's a little vague, and, and I think we can tighten that up, if that makes sense, I...
And so what did this selectman, like, they, they decided to put something on the warrant, but they haven't decided what yet, or they're waiting, there's still an opportunity for us to, for the selectmen to change?
It's their opportunity for us to change anything, and also for, after the public hearing, and probably they can change it after their public hearing as well.
I think at the moment, the, the words, the verbiage would be very vague, essentially it would be confirming all of the changes in the land use.
It, yeah. It's just put on, put it on the ballot for the town meeting, is what they voted to do, or agreed to do.
Okay. And so it, it changes from what's published now?
Yeah, it wasn't like specific language of what's going on in there.
Which has been made available to the public, both on the internet and in the office, and I brought you a copy too, you never told me not to.
Actually, I was looking at it tonight on my, on my computer, being like, gosh, Katie hurt me up on some, thank you.
Got you.
Thank you.
This time I remove it.
That's great.
Okay, that's all I have to say, I think. So, unless somebody else has something to add, I'll take a motion to set the date for the next meeting, March twenty-sixth, six P M, right here.
All right, so... Second?
Motion second on the table to set the date for our next meeting, for March twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-four, at six P M, here in the meeting room of the town office. Okay. Motion to adjourn at seven fifty, fifty-four. Is that what you have?
Did I miss the vote on the seven fifty?
Oh, we had a vote, right? No, we didn't, okay. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, thank you.
Seven fifty-four.
Seven fifty-four.
Motion to adjourn at seven fifty-four, we have that in a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Okay. Thank you, folks.